Running a few minutes late, so Ed's gonna start us off.
Yeah, he is coming though.
We have a, whatever, basically that's four, three, one.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Our chairperson Randy is running a little late, but he will be here. We'd like to go ahead and start the meeting on time. We'd like to invite everyone to join us in the reciting the pledge of allegiance to the American flag. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Anyone had a chance to look at the agenda for today's meetings? The motion to approve the agenda for today's. Fall in favor, let me know my sign high. The agenda for today's meeting has been approved. The floor is now open for public comments. Anyone who would like to make a comment?
Yes, and I will note that we did not have a sign in sheet outside, so we will just let you come up and make a comment if you have a comment.
Please come to the podium, give your name and.
Where you're from, I guess.
And where you're from and we'll be all right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Shelley Allen. I'm Chair of the Brunswick County Democratic Party. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. It's my understanding that due to a board member's absence today, and I'm sorry to hear about the circumstances, I don't mean Randy, but other gentlemen, that any decisions made regarding early voting, times and locations for the 2026 primaries, even if all members agree can be overrun or overridden by the state Board of Elections.
Correct.
But I'd still like to express support for our traditional two weeks of early voting, including times on Saturdays and Sundays. For many citizens, Saturdays and Sundays are the best time for them to exercise their right to vote due to full-time jobs, childcare commitments, transportation issues, or other circumstances. The Souls to the Polls movement has demonstrated that for many voters, the best and in some cases only opportunity to get a ride to the polls is after church on Sundays. In addition, offering weekend days for early voting further relieves the pressure on Election Day Board of Election staffers, poll workers, and locations. The more early voting days are restricted, the longer the lines on Election Day. This leads to undue pressure on election officials and unfeasible wait times for voters with work and family commitments. Given our exploding population in Brunswick County, our local government officials should be finding ways to provide our outstanding Board of Election staff with enough tools, time, and employees to deal with the ongoing influx of new voters. Doing so ensures our election processes continue to run effectively. Likewise, government leaders should be making sure that everyone in our expanding county is offered a sufficient opportunity to vote, meaning our standard two weeks of early voting, including those Saturday and Sunday hours. Such opportunities have caused no negative outcomes in the past, except for those who believe that providing all eligible voters with fair chances to vote is a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Feel free to come forward. Thank you very much. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Ginger Trapanato. And I would just like to second, I know we applauded, but I agree with everything Shelley said. It's really hard for people to get out when they're trying to make a living. You guys do an extraordinary job. So I would like to add that we need, we need two weeks of early voting and we absolutely need Saturday and Sundays. I volunteer usually and there are people there that work Saturday and try to make it. If we didn't have Sunday, they wouldn't be able to vote and that's, that's our right. So I just want to say I agree with everything that Shelley said.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Larry Pelkey in Calabash. And my understand, and I agree along with what Shelley said. And my understanding is that some of the days for early voting are in question and they may be restricted. And my two-part statement is that do you think it's a wise move to restrict voting rather than make it easier for people to vote? And the B part of that is this is a well-informed electorate. And I'm sure that on Election Day, people will remember who voted to make the voting rights more restrictive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ray Barcalow. I'm coming here from the perspective of a former poll worker. When early voting is restricted in any way, shape, or form, you do get a much larger turnout on Election Day. My own experience with that has been especially during presidential elections and big-name things like that, big-ticket items. A lot of people stand in line for a long time. A lot of people get frustrated. I remember at one point, we had probably about forty people come to the poll I was working who were not from that particular, that was not their home polling place. Because of that, they had to do provisional ballots. What that means is these guys got to work that much harder, all right? And, you know, I imagine they get paid more than the poll workers do for dealing with it on Election Day or early voting. So it's not only is it, quite frankly, an undemocratic thing to restrict early voting, it's actually cost ineffective and it wastes a lot of the board's money. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Regina Rogers and I too am a current poll worker. And I don't know if the question has been asked, but why? Is there going to be restrictions to the polls and the days? Is there a reason? Or is this not a place to ask questions?
I'm sorry.
Is this not a place to ask questions as to why?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, I thought you were making a generic statement there.
No, I was just asking why, because I haven't seen any reason why.
Why to what?
Why there's going to be consideration for restrictions of early voting, limiting the day.
We have to consider it, so it's not that we're, you know, every.
Okay, but there, even the consideration, the reason why there's a consideration.
Because by law required to do it every two years.
Do what every two years?
To consider the dates, times, and locations.
Okay, so this is not a new thing and this is a current, just for review. Okay, so I'd like to put my two and a half cents in that I don't want it limited.
Thank you.
And I enjoy being a poll worker and I enjoy the people that come and work and to vote at the polls. They're so respectful, so nice to us. And I, I respect the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Sarah Haas. I live on Oak Island. I'm sixty-nine right now, but when I was thirty-five, I had two jobs, two kids. I was taking two courses at a time at the university to get better jobs. And I voted not in the pri, not in the primaries, but in the regular elections because my kids were interested and they had good teachers that had them reading the paper and they'd have it set out for me when I come home. We'd discuss it and then I'd take them with me to the polls on the four days I had off a month when it worked between ball practice. Asking me at that time to go to the polls after work when homework needed to be reviewed, ball practice was happening and dinner had to be prepared was not logical. My boys have grown up to be forty-year-old men and they vote. And that was part of, because we were not cut off because of our current circumstances, I could teach them that lesson. And it was a really good thing for my family. So I asked many young families, their limiting factor is time. My limiting factor was not work. I could get all the hours I wanted. My limiting factor was not my intellect. I loved my classes. My limiting factor was time. And I wanted to be a good parent, so I'm asking you to keep early voting available for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Comments? Anybody online?
So we did not have any submitted through the online public comment portal, but because this is not a regular meeting and there's not like a staff administrative report, I would like Melissa to just make an announcement about upcoming poll worker orientation sessions because when we talk about early voting and the upcoming elections, we're always seeking more poll workers. So I'm just gonna let Melissa chime in at this point of the meeting, if that's okay.
That's perfect. Melissa.
So we are looking for poll workers for 2026. Poll worker training will begin for the primary right after the new year. So time is of the essence if we want to recruit additional poll workers. We have three upcoming sessions of poll worker orientation, which is the first step in someone interested in becoming a poll worker. There is a session tomorrow in this room at ten AM. There is a session next Wednesday in this room at two PM. And also next Wednesday, there is a virtual session by Zoom at six PM. Registration for all of those sessions can be found on our website under precinct officials. There is more specific information about poll worker orientation as well as the links to sign up for any of those orientation sessions.
Thank you very much. See, there are no other, no other public comments. Are they, are they, are there? Thank you for your comments and. Let's go to the next item in the agenda.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is discussion of early voting for the 2026 primary election. We have discussed this in a few meetings leading up to today. And so I just want to provide a synopsis and this is in the online agenda packet. And I did update that packet this morning, just for anyone watching or in the audience. That includes additional information like previous early voting turnout and locations that we've considered that aren't really a good fit. So if you want to see more information, just go check out the updated agenda packet on our website. So early voting is going to begin on Thursday, February twelfth and run through Saturday, February twenty-eighth, 2026. All sites, including the Board of Election site or the in lieu of Board of Election site, have to be open on the last Saturday from eight until three. Weekday hours are required to be standard and that's eight AM until seven-thirty PM at the satellite location. So that is something that we don't have any leeway with. What the board can make a decision on is weekend hours. And if the board opens one satellite site for any amount of hours on a weekend, they must open all of the satellite locations for equal number of hours. So if you open one on Saturday from ten to four, all of the satellite sites need to be open on that Saturday from ten to four or an equal number of hours. I don't know that we would ever stray from the number of hours or the, the set times. So the board can discuss and make decisions about weekend hours, so Saturday and Sunday. The board can make decisions about the locations. And so I'll talk a little bit about the locations and some of the challenges that we are having with finding suitable locations for early voting. And if it's okay with you, I'll just kind of go right into that, the locations.
Locations, perfect.
So we have identified locations that we know will work. We have already gotten on the schedule at the facilities for the entirety of the early voting period. So that would be the Leland Cultural Arts Center in the north part of the county, the Brunswick Center at Supply and kind of the central part of the county, and Sunset Beach Community Center at, in, in kind of the southern part of the county. Now, the, the challenge is we are struggling to find a suitable location in the Southport area and in the Shiloh area. I will tell you that last week, Ryan and I had a pretty frank discussion about the Moose Lodge, which we used for the presidential election. That facility struggled to accommodate the number of voters that were moving through in a presidential election, general election. I do think that it could work for a primary election, so we have reached out to them. We do not have a solid answer about whether they would be open to allowing us to use that location again. So I cannot tell you for sure that that is an option, but we are working with the facility to see if we can work something out there. And, and that's really only going to be a viable option in a primary election. So I do not think the Moose Lodge would work for the general election next year just because of the larger number of voters that move through that facility and the other things that go on at the Moose Lodge. So I can't finalize that today.
So, so you said it's okay for the primary, not for the general?
For the primary, for our purposes, it could work because the number of voters that move through the early voting sites in a primary election is significantly lower than it is in a general election. So I think we could make that site work in a primary.
Okay, but then, but that's all we would, okay, so you're talking about, so come the fall.
We would still need a location in the Southport area, yes.
One, one economy.
And I have provided, so in, for the board members to see in tab three of your binders, Ryan has put together a list of all of the locations and this is in the online agenda packet that was just updated this morning. So I'm sorry you didn't have it leading up to that. All of the locations that we have had recommended to us that we've looked at in both the Southport and the Shiloh areas and the reasons why they really aren't suitable for early voting. When I talk about that, I do think it's important to note that early voting is required to be held in a publicly funded facility. And only when we cannot find a suitable publicly funded facility can we consider a private facility like the Moose Lodge. So because there's nothing else in the Southport, Oak Island area that is publicly funded, so funded by tax dollars, we could ask the state to allow us to use that, that private facility.
Okay. So we. We went with the Moose Lodge for the primary.
Yes, and I'll preface that with, we still need to know that they are agreeable to it. We can't just say we're going there. They planned, we got a call back, Ryan actually got a call while we were setting up in here and they're gonna talk to the board members to see if they're agreeable to it, but I will not have that answer today.
Okay, now, but we will not use them for the general election?
I would not recommend using them for the general election. So we still would be in the pickle of not having a, a solid facility for early voting in the general election next year in the Southport area.
Even though it's not presidential?
Even though it's not presidential, there's still a large number of people that move through it. And the, the nature of what the Moose Lodge is, it's also a bar and a restaurant. And so we run into challenges with football season and Halloween events and things where they have their own business going on. At the same time, we have voters and that just, that was problematic.
Yeah, I was there last year.
Yeah, yeah.
When we make our submission to the State Board of Elections for next year?
I'm sorry?
When we make the submissions, the early voting submissions for next year, if we only submit, assuming that the Moose Lodge accepts us, if we submitted them for the primary, what would we, we would still, we have to make submissions for the fall.
Yes, we would still have a totally separate meeting identical to this where you would make decisions about early voting for the fall. Every election's early voting plan is essentially standalone, so you, you would make that decision for every election.
Okay, so we'd have to, we'd have a, a new date for submitting a plan for the fall.
For the fall, yes. We would have a new date, a new meeting, hopefully some additional options shared with us by the public. We have, honestly, we have beat the streets, so to speak, trying to identify locations. I know that staff has had contact with our sheriff's office liaison who spoke with the police chief in Shiloh, trying to identify locations that maybe we haven't thought of. I shared some information about looking for sites with the city clerk of Southport and asked that it be shared with their council members and mayor to see if anyone can come up with anything new. I truly think that most of the options that were given are options we've already looked at. We're not really getting a lot of new ideas provided to us and those that we are getting, we're looking into. But when you think about early voting being seventeen days and really for that seventeen days, we are the only thing that can take place in the voting enclosure while voting is going on. So, you know, if a location has a rental for a Sunday or Saturday, we can't pack up and move out. Logistically, that is too challenging for staff to manage cleaning out so it can be used for something else during the voting period, so.
What about Shiloh? What about Shiloh? Any possibilities there?
No, at, at this time, we don't really have any, any possibilities for the primary election for the Shiloh area. We will have, the Supply Senior Center will be open. I know that's not ideal for those that are doing business in the Shiloh area, but it, it's, you know, a little further up Highway seventeen, hopefully not too bad of a drive. And then we do have Sunset Beach, so, you know, people could choose whether they prefer to drive south or north or take advantage of absentee by mail or Election Day voting.
Yeah. Ed and I looked at a bunch of locations through this fall. One we didn't put on the list, did y'all consider maybe like the Oak Island Town Hall possibly? Is that, that doesn't work?
I don't know that they have a space inside that would be large enough, Ryan. Have we looked at that at all? Not specifically, no. So we can certainly reach out. Yeah, Ryan, would you make a note? Thank you.
Normally we have five sites for the voting. If we don't, if we go to the state and say, this is our plan and we only list three sites, does that mean that that's all we will have throughout the county?
Yes, for the primary election. Yeah, it's election-specific. So whatever we send to the state, and I will preface that with the decision that's made today, if a decision is made or if we decide to wait until we get confirmation from the Moose Lodge about whether we can use their building, we could reconvene or have another special meeting. I was thinking virtually, like iron out all the other details today and then maybe just come back to, to officially add in the Moose Lodge if they're agreeable to it.
Can't we just add the Moose Lodge and then if they say no, take it off? Would be easier that way? You don't have to have another meeting?
My only hesitation there is if you approve the Moose Lodge, I, I, I don't know about it being made public when we just heard from the facility today that the board voted to use it. They haven't said that we could use it, you know?
I mean, it's, it's a convenience factor.
And it could be confusing if somebody reads something that it's approved by the board, but we don't get to use it. So I would prefer, yeah. And.
I'm sorry.
Well, I was just gonna add, so we do have one board member that's not able to join us in person today or remotely. And so for that reason, any plan approved by the board, if not all appointed members are present, is considered non-unanimous because the board or the law requires early voting plans to be unanimous by all appointed members of the board. So even if the, when Randy gets here, the four board members agree on something, it would still have to go to the state for consideration because it won't be considered unanimous in the eyes of the law. And I just want to toss that out there. I do think that the board could discuss weekend hours today and maybe come to a consensus on what you think there. I think that, you know, once you decide that, we can really pause on the locations and have a, a quick virtual meeting once we get confirmation from the Moose Lodge to add that in.
I guess my problem is it's population-wise in this county, we're growing at a rapid rate. And to reduce the number of locations from five to three is concerning to.
So in the, so five to three is from the presidential election. So in the 2022 primary election, which would be the last comparable primary election that was held, we had four satellite locations, not five. And same goes for the 2024 primary election. So last year's primary, we had four satellite early voting sites, not five.
So what's wrong with that library that you used last time? That's not on the list now?
The library.
Southwest Brunswick Branch Library in Calabash was one of the early.
So the challenge there is when we use that for voting, we actually were occupying two rooms and we should not have been doing that. And we should not have been doing that. It has to be one single voting enclosure that the chief judge and observers can see everything that's going on. And, and that, that was not a fit. So and the only option at that library is those two, like, classroom type situations.
Can't point to cold chief judges?
Uh, no, no, no. I wish we could do, uh, you know, a, a workaround like that, but that would not work, no.
So can, if I was following you, if with the Moose Lodge says we can use it, we can make an amendment later to the plan?
Yes, um, we could, we could have a virtual meeting where you guys wouldn't have to actually come back in here. We could notice a special meeting, um, get you all on a Zoom call, notice it to the public where they can, you know, weigh in. But we would need to have an official vote on that. Yes.
Okay.
I know Randy floated the idea of maybe having two smaller locations in the same area. Maybe that would possibly work.
So one of the challenges there is poll workers. Honestly, um, when we run early voting during the week because of the length of the day, we're running two shifts. So if we need, I'm just gonna throw a number out there, eleven poll workers to staff a site, we really need twenty-two for that day. And then if you add another location in the same geographic area, that would be forty-four that we would need for one day to staff the early voting site. And when we run early voting, availability is not always as wide open as we would hope for, for the poll workers. And so I think trying to staff two close together, um, I'm not saying we couldn't make it work. I think that it would take a lot of planning on our part, and I don't know that we would be prepared to implement something like that in the primary.
I mean, nothing's ideal. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, nothing's ideal. I, I mean, that could work, but I also know that people are a creature of habit. So if you have two locations, early voting locations, one we've used many times before, smaller, not ideal. People are still going to funnel to that location and not the new one that we've opened up, even if it's in close proximity. We've seen that in the past when we've had two early voting sites in the north part of the county. Everyone goes to the place that they've used before. Yeah.
Looking at the list that Ryan has here, um, my, my problem here, you probably gather I'm having a problem. There are twenty-seven thousand folks, a large number of people who live in the Southport. Falling Springs, St. James, O'Callaghan, more than twenty-five thousand folks who live there. And to just not have any place for them to vote, um, concerning to me. What about the Southport, the school, the Southport Elementary School?
So I, I could not in good conscience recommend a school for early voting under any circumstance because, um, it's one thing when we're there on election day, the school board has graciously given us teacher workdays, so we don't have any situation where families and students are there at the same time that poll workers and voters are. I don't think logistically operating early voting at a school, even if it were a standalone site on the school, if a school had like a auxiliary gym or something like that, I think traffic concerns would be problematic. And also, um, just the logistics of trying to keep voters separate from the students.
The other question I would have is, if I look at the list that Ryan has put together here. Granted, we might not be able to find something that's perfect this year. Well, if I look at this list, what would be the least troublesome?
Well, well, at this point, I'm hoping that the Moose Lodge will come through for the primary election. That is, that's probably the lesser of the evils for the primary election in the Southport area. In the general election, we would be looking at more voters coming through. I do have a meeting scheduled in January with the mayors, five mayors from that area. And I do hope to present our challenges and make a case for maybe pursuing some options that haven't been open to us in the past, like the, um, St. James, uh, Event Center. I do know that when we discussed that location in the past, there was discussion of payment and fees and events that they have scheduled. I think it's a little, um, it might be a little easier to stomach paying a publicly funded facility if they ask it and that's the only way they will let us use it, um, in an election when turnout is higher. I, I don't think that, um, trying to get into discussion with St. James for the primary, I don't think that would be fruitful. I think that, that needs to be an option for a larger election, like a, a midterm general or presidential general.
Okay. I don't want to dominate the conversation.
No, it sure could. I, I'm a North Brunswick person. I'm not familiar with what's even down there, so. I got plenty of voting spots by me, so.
Thank you.
Now, you're talking about St. James. Uh, part of the issue is the length of time of early voting.
Yes.
So that's, that's been hampering us as well.
Yes, um, the length of time, uh, the number of hours per day, um, you know, a, a location, even if it's funded by tax dollars, if they're allowing us to be there, usually a location wants to have staff on site. They need, they have added cleaning fees for all of the people coming in and out. So it is a burden to the locations that allow us to use their facilities. We completely understand that, and I think that's one of the challenges with, um, St. James. Because Ed, you mentioned earlier, St. James, that's considered more of an event center now as opposed to a community center. So they need to keep that building in, you know, event center shape to have things like weddings and receptions and, you know, things like that. It's not necessarily just for the residents to come and have a place to congregate. It is, you know, an event center, so like a banquet hall.
I know we discussed, um, fire departments. I know some are used now, right? Is there anything?
So we do have some fire departments that are used on election day. I don't know that we have any that would be ideal for long-term use because when we use those facilities, they are, uh, generally having to take the fire trucks, move those out of the bays, um, to allow us to have floor space. And I think doing that for one day is workable, but when we talk about having to have that space for seventeen days and them having their equipment moved and not easy to get to, I think that could hinder their operations.
None of those fire departments have meeting rooms? I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, where I come from, every firehouse had a room upstairs that with an elevator going up to that could hold three hundred people, you know, and that's their event space.
We haven't found one with a meeting space large enough. Now, that's not to say that there's not one out there that we haven't had discussion with or gone to look at, but I have not found one that has a meeting space large enough. In addition to that, they have to have parking large enough to hold, hold that number of people. You know, like when you think about the, the South, the Southport Fire Department that's on Howe Street, I mean, they have.
Yeah.
Um, I believe they have a, a meeting room, but the parking lot can only hold, it's a small number of cars. It wouldn't accommodate the number of people we would need to, to be able to move through.
Let me, um, board if you don't mind, um. Let's, let's switch and talk about the dates. Then we'll, if you think of something new about locations, we can come back to that.
Well, going by, uh, the last primary we had, which was, uh, just la- just last year, right? I mean, we had one early voting primary. We were open, um, both Saturdays and one Sunday. So that was last year. We were open. And we decided that, um, the one Sunday we had, we started later, so it'll only be, it'll only be a four hour shift. So that way people left, they, whatever they do in the morning, go out to breakfast with their family, go to, go to services. They would have time then to go to vote after, after their services. Because it is a primary, um, I mean, o- obviously I would like everything to be open every day because, you know, the, the point that the county is growing as fast and is still, after all this time, still growing. As we, you know, evident by driving past all the housing projects that are being developed. That, uh, you know, I'm gonna argue, um, or, you know, request that, you know, we approve at least the first Sunday for the primary voting this year. Or, I mean, even though the state obviously is gonna have the ultimate decision. Based upon, um, my, you know, from past history and the overwhelming support from the people who showed up today to, you know, voice their support for weekend, for, you know, weekend, uh, voting. I, I'm just gonna, I'm going to put a motion on the, on the floor to, um, have the early voting for the 2026 primary equate to the 2024 primary election.
Schedule, uh, date wise.
Obviously, the days aren't the same, the, the day's open.
Twenty twenty-four, we had, um.
Right, so it was, it was, uh, the first Saturday was ten to three, the first Sunday was one to five. The second Saturday was ten to three, and the, and the second Sunday was closed. And then the third, uh, Saturday, the last Saturdays were required to be open between eight and three, so. But that was just, you know, I, I know whatever we say today, it doesn't make, it's gonna go to the state board to ultimately decide. But, um, at the very least, um, based upon just, you know, people in the only stating how much easier life was to be able to vote by having a, a Sunday available. And, uh, you know, obviously Saturdays, because people, that people do work those schools, so. Um, just, that's my.
He's in, he's in both Saturdays and the first Sunday?
And the first Sunday, yes.
Can we wait for Randy? I think this is.
Well, yeah.
I think this discussion requires Randy as well.
Well, not really, because we have that five.
Yeah, I understand Randy's the chair, though. I think he'd like to be in this discussion.
I've asked for an ETA. I haven't gotten a response. He may be driving.
Okay.
All I know is he was running late.
Okay.
Then you want to recess until he gets here? Is there nothing to do?
Okay, um, recess for ten minutes, five minutes? How much time do you want to give him?
You would, you would need to put a time on.
There's the man.
Oh, okay.
Hey.
How about no minutes?
No minutes, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, for those who don't know, this is Randy Pelton, who chairs the board.
Folks, I apologize. I was totally unavoidably detained. My apologies to everybody. Thank you.
This is a quick summary, uh, Randy, we, we've gone through, sir and Randy and Ryan, I'm sorry, have updated us on first locations in Southport and Shiloh.
Okay.
Come to the conclusion that we may possibly have, we reached out to the Moose Lodge in Southport, waiting for an answer back from them. As the least of the problem areas that we can probably, hopefully, they accept. We will use them as our primary location in Southport for the primary that's coming up.
Okay, the, the Moose Lodge?
Moose Lodge, on Long Beach Road. We have nothing so far in Shiloh. And we have, uh, decided now to look at the weekend voting days. On the floor is a motion by Paula to have both Saturdays and the first Sunday.
Similar to the 2024.
Twenty, yeah.
Okay, that's what we have.
And as a matter of fact, um, in a previous meeting, uh, uh, one of, Dave, our board member who's sick today, I had mentioned the two, two Saturdays and a Sunday.
Yeah.
So. Uh, I will now turn the meeting over to you as chairperson.
Okay, well. So Paula, could you reiterate your, your proposition?
So in the, in our binders, there's, uh, the 2024 primary early voting schedule.
Which, which tab are you looking at just so?
The one that says 2024 primary.
It's under number two.
Number two, okay, that's the one I'm on. Thank you.
Alright, so basically with this, I put a motion on the floor to replicate this schedule, just obviously the days of the week, the dates will be different. But so it shows that it's open on the first and second Saturdays between ten and three, and the first Sunday between one and five. The second Sunday, we, we will not open for early voting. And by law, we're required to be open the last Saturday.
Correct.
So, and I put, I put a motion on the floor that we accept, we, we draft and propose a similar schedule to what we had done in the past.
Okay. I'm looking at the tab for that, the 2022 primary. Essentially a copy of what we're looking at for this election.
Well, except there was, there was more voting locations then, unlike this time? We still have that Moose Lodge that's not, so potentially we'll only, we may only have three early voting locations for the weekend. So that's also something in consideration now, because instead of having that fourth, where now the other places will have more people.
Okay. So. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to catch up.
No, please, take your time.
For, for locations, we're looking at specific.
Three currently that are confirmed.
Alright, and they would be?
They are on the.
The Land Cultural Arts Center.
Okay.
Brunswick Center at Supply and the Sunset Beach Community Center.
Hey, the first half.
And I apologize if I'm covering ground, you guys have already covered, but we can't do the Senior Center in Shiloh this time?
I would not recommend that we use that as a voting location at this. And we've talked about this before, it's because the space that we use is a, it, it's like a foyer. It's a big hallway with rooms off the side that are still being used when we're in there. So we don't have a true voting enclosure at that location. And that's why we moved away from it for election day.
I'll be perfectly, I, I'd love to see something in the Shiloh area, as I recall, that was a very, very busy location the last time.
I would agree with you. I, um, and I provided this update to the other board members earlier. We have beat the bushes, tried to find something, um, we reached out to our contact at the, um, Brunswick County Sheriff's Office who lives in that area. He reached out to the police chief of Shiloh, just trying to see if there were any other facilities that we have not thought of or been made aware of, and we just aren't coming up with anything that, that's fruitful.
And I guess just to reiterate the obvious, um, we have used the high school from time to time, but for an early voting location, that would be unacceptable just because it's seventeen days.
It is seventeen days and the, um, trying to keep voters and students from mingling and the traffic concerns at arrival and dismissal, I do not think that would be a good idea.
And I would agree with you, especially for, uh, early voting for seventeen days. If we had a teacher's workday and.
Yeah.
That's for one election day, that would be something, I think, entirely different. I, I'll be perfectly honest with you, I, I would be more comfortable with, with more locations than I'm sure everybody else would.
Ten, I mean.
You know, I, I don't have a magic answer for that right now, so. Yes, if we come back to the hours. Personally, if I look at the primary results from 2022.
And I look at the.
You know, I'm not seeing, you know, huge, well, any, any numbers obviously on, uh.
Sunday because we weren't open.
Right.
But now we, remember it's four years now, we have more people moved here, and we're gonna have less voting locations. So that, right now, we have three.
Understood.
Well, that's, I mean, so all you're actually doing is adding four hours, one day, to what the. to what the primary election schedule was. That could, I mean, it's four hours, that many people, you know, a couple hundred, whatever people vote, that would alleviate, somewhat. I mean, we had people come up, you weren't here, that came and took the main public comments stating that, you know, that, um, they are affected when they work on election day, if the early voting is not open on, on the weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays full. So we had people actually say that today.
Okay. You know, we, we've heard that before, so, you know, that's, that's not news. Mr. Lewis, could you give me your thoughts?
I think the, the biggest complicating factor is that we are reducing the number of sites. I personally would love to see two Saturdays and two Sundays. Take, uh, the growth in the population and the reduction in the number of other voting sites. I also like the hours that we had last time around. On Saturday, we were open ten to four, and on Sunday, twelve to five, or twelve to four would be acceptable.
Okay. Mr. Marsh?
I'm of the opinion that's, early voting's too long, which also gives us a struggle finding locations. I think some locations have that issue, because it's that long. So I think if we reduced it some, I think we might have more opportunity for more locations.
I'm gonna, we have to get a new law change to reduce it. I mean, that's the state law, it has to be open those days.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I understand the, the bookends.
Madam Director, if, if the board were to ask to go back and relook at the Shiloh Senior Center, I know it, it's not one of your pop, most favorite items. Do you think we could find some kind of a way to address the issues associated with that facility?
My honest answer, I do not think so.
Okay.
If the board would like me and Ryan to pay a visit and see what logistically it would take to create a, a true enclosure in that building and what the cost would be, we can do that. I don't know that we would have that done by the time we need to turn in the early voting plan for the primary election, but I am happy to try.
Very diplomatic answer.
Uh, no, is her answer.
Kinda, kinda.
I'll interpret it, no.
Kinda got that. So we have a motion on the floor. Is that correct?
Right.
And the hours specifically you were indicating for the weekends were.
Uh, my motion was Saturday, ten to four, both Saturdays, and the first Sunday, one to five.
Alright.
But I'm going to amend my motion
Good.
to agree with my colleague that we have both, um, Saturdays open ten to four and both Sundays open twelve to five.
Paula, your original motion was ten to three.
Ten to three, sorry.
Yes, that's okay, just wanted to clarify.
To ten to four and, uh, twelve to five on the Sundays.
Okay.
I am certainly open to further discussion.
Yeah, um, realizing that what we're dealing with here is a closed primary election. You know, and from a sense of party competitiveness, it's really not of any consequence at this point, although it may be of consequence if you're looking at, multiple people running for the same office in, in a primary. Personally, at this point, I don't see a benefit to having us open on Sundays. That's just my personal opinion. I do on Saturdays.
Even though the growth of the county and having a potential of only three sites.
Yes, let me answer your question. And I realize that's probably not a, a very popular position.
Well, not with the audience, I believe.
Oh, well. But. Have we discussed the need for having unanimous?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we did discuss that whatever the board were to decide today, and my, my recommendation was to maybe have the board hash out the hours. Um, and then we revisit locations once we hear back from the Moose Lodge through a, a quick virtual meeting, just to finalize it, whether we are adding the Moose Lodge or not. Um, so, yes, even if you all four agree, we still would be considered to have a non-unanimous plan because all appointed members are not participating in the vote.
Understood.
And that means that it would be sent to the State Board of Elections for consideration.
Okay. We hope to hear back from the Moose Lodge by?
Um, a few days. We actually just got a call back from them when we were coming into this room for the meeting, and they've got to, um, vet the discussion with their board members. And so, I, I mean, I think in a week, we should have something back.
Okay. So we have a motion for hours to include in the satellite locations, Saturdays, ten to four, and Sundays, twelve to five. Do we have any more discussion on that point? Can we get a, a vote on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, no.
I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm for.
You're for, yes. Okay, opposed? No, okay. Excuse me? No.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so we have a, a split vote on that. We're gonna wait to hear from the Moose Lodge, hopefully by the end of this week. We have to have this into the state by Friday.
Uh, no, um, we actually have until give me two seconds. Let me check my calendar. Yeah, I was thinking eighteenth, so let's check, um. Let's see, of course, I didn't put it in my electronic account, nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay, so we've got some time on that.
We do have some time, and I do, um, I'll just note that I have to provide forty-eight hours notice of a special meeting. So, once I get an answer back, I can share that with the board, and at that time, we can decide on a time to have a, a special meeting to discuss the locations. And, um, I think we could probably do that virtually. Um, and, and just make the decision on the locations, if, if you guys are firm on your decisions about the times.
Okay. Any thoughts or comments on that from my fellow board members? So. So right now, we, we've, I guess, do we, we need a motion to cover weekend hours? We'd split on the one that we've got.
Um, so the way it works, if it's non-unanimous, we submit the plan that was voted on to the state and explain that it was non-unanimous. Um, typically, the minority board members, so those that did not win the vote, would submit an alternative plan. Um, but because it's split two to two, I mean, I think if you wanted to make a motion for what you guys would like to see, um, Joe and Randy, we could just submit the two.
Yeah, I think we're, that's where, that's where I was headed.
Okay.
Mr. Meyer, would you like to make a motion?
Let's, uh, do Saturdays, but not Sundays.
Okay.
What hours, the ten to four?
Mr. Meyer's, uh, motion is to do the Saturdays with the, uh, hours of ten to four and no Sundays. Is that correct? Okay. Call, call for a vote? All in favor? Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So we're split on that one also. And then we are gonna defer on the Moose Lodge and?
Yeah, so I'll provide forty-eight hours notice of the board meeting, once I can get availability for you guys. Um, that goes out through our sunshine list, so if you subscribe to that, you will be notified. Um, and then we'll just do that virtually, if that is okay with the board members.
Uh, that, that's fine with me, um. Let, let me be sure, just clarification for my purposes. What we're gonna submit to the state board? Would it be both of the motions that we've carried here today?
Yeah, both schedules, yes. And we're holding off on locations to go with that until we have another special meeting, once we hear back from the Moose Lodge.
When are you going to submit those two votes?
Um, once we have a meeting on the locations, we will tie it all together.
Okay, and this is just for the primary?
Primary election, just for the primary. We will do this all over again for the general election and hopefully have some better options for locations. I really hope.
So do we. I'd like to talk with you and Ryan after the meeting. Perhaps we could revisit the Shiloh Senior Center. Um, I don't know whether one of you folks would like to be involved with that also.
Good.
I guess, you know, we, we've been trying, I get the sense we've been trying to get locations that could handle large crowds. And because we've had issues, especially in, uh, Southport with the, the senior center there, where we had so many folks, it was disrupting the, the nature of the business. And I realize that it's probably whistling in the wind, but I don't, I'm not sure whether we could look for smaller locations where we wouldn't have the parking issues essentially, where two smaller issue venues that we may be able to get would be adequate to in lieu of one large one, and we can take that discussion offline. That's just a matter of, uh, trying to figure that all out. And, um, you know, I, just going forward, not only this year, I think, but in, in the next ten years, with the growth in the county, as Paula so adequately pointed out, that we're, we're gonna be facing ongoing, excuse me, ongoing challenges for polling locations, and, uh, that's gonna be a, a never-ending issue. And I have no magic answer for that, but anyway. Alright. Is there any other business that the, uh, oh, new business board scheduled? I'm sorry.
That's under tab four.
I'm sorry?
Under tab four, in your binder.
We have no, we have a, the first meeting here for twenty-sixth is the thirteenth of January. So, just to be clear, we have no regular meeting scheduled for December of twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
Just as a personal comment, I've already told Sarah this, looking at the twenty twenty-six schedule, uh, for February tenth and February seventeenth, I will not be here. We will be in Europe. So, uh, Mr. Lewis, if you could, uh,
What would it say? February twenty?
The, uh, the tenth and the seventeenth, I will not be here.
Okay. Let me check my calendar.
My wife and I are doing bucket list items.
I understand, I understand.
Alright. Do we need any discussion on the, uh?
No, I made a motion to accept the schedule as prepared by staff for our coming election season.
Let me just, um, I, wait, can we go into discussion?
Yes.
February seventeenth, we will be in the midst of early voting that day.
Correct.
Okay. Guess that won't disrupt us at all, in terms of what.
No, I, I think we'd be okay.
Okay, alright. Okay, I have no problem with the schedule.
Okay.
I may miss the January meeting, depending, looking at vacations, too.
Okay. Paula?
My motion was to accept the schedule as written by staff.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your hard work on that, Sarah, or whoever put it together. Any other business? Any other discussion? Hearing none? Do we have a, a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye? Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Once again, I do apologize for my tardiness.